It's recording. Take a moment to show.
There we go. Yep, I'm now getting it on my monitor. Alright, so Dr. Dale, if you want, we can resume. I expect that we probably won't see Noel or Kyle Davies on the call. There is a first responder event that we can suspect that they're involved in.
So Bill, since you said 15 minutes, what time did that take us to? 12:10?
I think so.
Okay.
But everybody has stayed called in, so, you know, I think when Dr. Dale wants to, we could probably resume.
Okay.
For everybody on the call, just FYI, the YouTube streaming should be working now.
Bill, can you hear me?
Yes. Whoops, we just lost you, Dale.
Bill, can you hear me?
Yeah, we got you.
Bill, he's got two call-in numbers on the call. That's why the echo is there.
Yep. So, Dr. Dale, did you change phones or are you connected twice? We can't hear you, Dale, if you're talking. Still can't hear you.
In the participants, it shows that he's muted, Rick.
I unmuted both.
Dr. Dale, can you hear us? We're not hearing you, Dr. Dale.
Can I delete one of the two numbers for him?
He just did that himself, or you did. So, Dr. Dale, if you're trying to get us, we're not hearing you.
Bill, can you hear me?
Now we can, yep.
I had to get out of Skype. For some reason, my Skype is not cooperating. So I'll be on the phone for the remainder of the meeting. So, did we get a report from the North Sound Behavioral Health or the Northwest Regional Council?
No, we did not. That's where we're at.
Okay, proceed.
Alright, so from the North Sound Behavioral Health, the ASO, Administrative Services Organization, they are continuing to provide their services. They've been looking for ways to funnel extra money into mental health and mental health crisis centers. So, that has been going on. Again, pretty much standard procedures going on and nothing significant to report as far as, you know, just trying to deal with COVID and the standard mental health services within the five county region. That's all my memory says. Mark, do you have any additional mental health updates?
Not specific to the BHASO, no.
Okay. What about the Northwest Regional Council? That'd be Rick.
Jamie is here.
Oh, Jamie, sorry.
We have our next board meeting coming up. And actually, we've been able to maintain a pretty good level of service. The Regional Council has kicked out some additional funds. I mean, this was like a month or so ago for senior nutrition. And will also be, and I don't know if we've received it yet, Mark, but supposed to be kicking out some funds that came from, I believe, Commerce for mental health and in-home, the in-home services for some of our elderly patients, of which there's more since fewer going out.
So, thank you, Jamie. So, we have worked and negotiated a contract regarding the care funding around the senior program of nutrition. That contract is being routed for signatures. And we worked with the senior nonprofit and with the Waukesha Council on Aging to distribute those funds among the three organizations. We are working on contracts specifically with the overarching nonprofit in that regard. With the majority of funds that we would be receiving actually going out to the senior nonprofit. So that, all of that work is underway. And just want to say thank you to the Northwest Regional Council for those definitely needed in this time and will be put to good use. Do not, have not seen or heard anything about those other funds yet, Jamie, so look forward to seeing that.
Thanks. And that's all I have on that.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay, we'll move on to the COVID-19 response. Kyle, are you, are you there? Kyle Dodd?
Yes. Good morning, Dr. Heisinger. Good morning, Board. Thank you. Kyle Dodd, Ryan Wannell, Health Manager. So, update on current situation of our COVID response. The statewide numbers as of this morning, we are at 43,072 cases statewide. That was an increase of about 760 new cases over the previous 24-hour period. In San Juan County, we currently have 22 cases. There were, and I know Council has heard this briefing yesterday, but for the board, we had three cases over the weekend. And those three cases have been quite a bit more challenging on the close contact tracing front. But in speaking with staff, our case investigations have been completed. Cases are isolating, those close contacts that were identified have been quarantining. And several have been tested already. So, a lot of work continues on the case investigation and contact tracing team front. So addition, in addition to that upfront work and putting the, putting the map together on all the contacts, they also stick with all those close contacts and follow up with them daily throughout that 14-day period. As you all know, the Governor announced on the second that he was placing a pause on all counties moving between phases for at least two weeks. So that date is tomorrow. And we heard that the pause has been extended until the end of July. So that announcement was made since last week as well. A couple more notes here related to our local emergency response. So, testing efforts are ongoing. You're all familiar with our asymptomatic testing program where we partner with businesses. We provide the staffing, the logistics, and the shipping. And we're asking the businesses to pay for the cost of the test. So that testing event at Roach Harbor on the ninth, where we tested 61 folks, that's where we found one of the positives of the three that I mentioned recently over the weekend. And yesterday, our team was out on Orkuss, testing 34 individuals as part of that as well. Discussions to expand our testing capability are underway. We would like to combine both our business asymptomatic testing program and then allow other residents and/or employees from smaller businesses that don't meet that threshold that we've identified, that we can handle, to be tested in partnership with Northwest Labs that we are in contact with. As I mentioned, our team is meeting with them today to work out details there. Again, trying to modify and meet the needs of increased uptake of testing and requests that we're getting. One final note from me, our Vulnerable Population Work Group. That's the work group that is providing home deliveries, primarily food, to over 275 households. As of last week, they had topped the 5,000 mark. So they have provided just over 5,300 unique deliveries to those families since we started that program as part of this response to meet those needs. So I think with that, that's my situation update. I can certainly answer any other questions or pass it off to Mark for his detailed look into the data.
Kyle, this is Dale. I have a question. It's been reported that there are shortages of tests and supplies and as well as delays in getting results from the tests. Is that also a problem in the San Juans, in our county?
Well, there are a lot of things at play there. And capacity of providers has certainly been coming up recently. We have test kits. Our team is able to get test kits from the state. So I don't know that supplies are necessarily a limiting factor for us. I will say that delays of reporting have affected us. The 21st case was tested and we didn't get the results until six days later. So it depends on the lab service that is used. The lab that we are currently using as part of our asymptomatic testing, we're typically getting results between 24 and 48 hours after they receive the specimens.
This is Dr. James, just to jump in, Dale. The delays are really in the national labs, so people are using LabCorp or Quest. Those systems are being overwhelmed at the national level, not from local cases, but really from those states that are seeing these astronomical increase in cases. And so, that, the delay we had was six days after the test was obtained. It wasn't actually the reporting that was delayed, it was actually the testing that was delayed. And so, the, those institutions using those facilities are going to experience that. And we're going to, we're still going to have the impact from that here. In terms of locally, as Kyle just said, we can still run a STAT lab if we have to and get it back in 12 hours if we send it locally. That's one of the reasons we're pursuing an enhanced relationship with Northwest Labs to get them present out here so we can get a quicker turnaround time. They would literally collect the sample, take it back to the lab, it'd be in the lab that night. And we could reasonably expect less than 24-hour turnaround time. So, I think that for now, it's not impacting us. We're well-stocked. Our labs are well-stocked locally. And so I think that that is an issue at the national level and an issue for providers that use those labs that are more backed up. The Seattle lab is more backed up than ours. They're processing specimens for other locations, the University lab. And so at least three of the four main lab, main clinics on our islands are using labs that do experience some delay.
The concern that I have, Frank, is that that can really impact our contact tracing if in fact there are delays in the reporting of the lab results to people in the Health Department. But it sounds like right now-
A six-day delay is, a lot happens in six days. We need to turn around time less than 48 hours to effectively do the interventions we're being asked to do. Hence, the reason we're in negotiations today to try to bring expanded testing to the islands. So far, those discussions are very promising.
Thank you, Frank. Any other questions from the Board of Health? Kyle?
Dr. Dale, this is Councilman Watson. Kyle, so I didn't pick up on your status. Have we completed the contact testing related to the three weekend cases?
Two, this is Frank, but two of the three have been totally completed. The other one is mostly completed but is more detailed. And people traveled off-island. There were other complicating factors, so we're not completely done. All the main contacts have been contacted. There are additional contacts we're working on that are more remote. So yes, all three have been assessed primarily for the impacts on the island. One, we're still very much engaged in trying to sort out some of the details.
And we'll expect results approximately when?
Well, the results of the contact tracing, the isolation and quarantine have already taken place. So if somebody's worried, "Have I been exposed?", the answer is they should already know. And they should be quarantined. There are a number of tests that are pending. We don't yet know the results of those tests. We expect to get them fairly quickly. And we will know more soon.
Alright.
One thing that wasn't clear to me, were these cases, the three cases, were they the result of community spread or from off-island contacts?
We still don't know, Dale. So, the, two of the cases are related to each other and are one unit. The other case appears to be unrelated to the other two. They are in young people. Young people are more mobile and often less willing to take the advice about mask-wearing and not gathering socially. Not that these young people did, but that group, that age group tends to be more in line with that. So, I don't think we yet know if this represents community spread. It could. We're still investigating. I mean, we do not know, we have a pretty good idea on the source of one of the cases. The other two that are related, we still actually don't know where the case came from. And for the other case where we think we do know where it most likely came from, we don't know the full extent of the spread yet. So it's very much ongoing.
Thanks, Frank. Any other questions? We'll move on to Mark.
Yeah, thanks, Dale. I'm going to share my screen, so those folks who have Skype will be able to see it. Those of you who don't, I apologize. But it is the links that we've shared in the past with the full board. And so this is current, what we're looking at is the risk assessment dashboard. Council, you saw this yesterday, so apologize for the repeat of this. But this is looking at a statewide picture for the key Washington State metrics. There are five of them. And as noted in this front page, currently, the state is meeting two out of the five and both around the healthcare system readiness. So that is, again, a good picture for us right now as a state in that our healthcare system is not getting overwhelmed, which is happening in some other states. You will note that where we're not meeting it is around the rate for newly diagnosed cases during the prior two weeks, the number of people being tested for each new case, and then the percent positive. Both of those are actually going up in the last couple of weeks. So we are currently at, as a statewide picture, 113.1% for 100,000 of newly diagnosed cases in the prior two weeks. And then 5.6% of the tests are being positive for the, during the past week. So that is where we stand. And you can see the current phasing for Washington State. So there are five counties that are in modified Phase 1, 17 counties in Phase 2, including San Juan, and 17 counties in Phase 3. If you actually look at the graph display of hospital readiness, this is the percent of licensed beds occupied statewide. The goal is having less than 80% of the beds occupied. This is indicating that we are at 59.7%, so additional capacity there. So again, some good information that our hospitals aren't being overwhelmed at this point in time. The other measure is around percent of licensed beds occupied by COVID cases. We're currently at, the goal is less than 10%. We're currently at 3.6%. And as a way of comparison, back in the first part of June, we were at 3.6%. So, it did go down briefly in mid-June and has been steadily trending upwards slightly. And so in the last six weeks, we've gone, we basically started at 3.6% and we're currently at 3.6% as a statewide system. Wanted to show you what it looks like from a regional perspective. And so I'm going to select, and these would be where potentially our patients would go. So we're looking at Island, Skagit, Snohomish, and Waukesha County. And starting out with the first one, the number of patients in the beds here is actually, is actually trending down in our region. So, back at the beginning of June, it was at 3.5%. We're currently at 2.4% of beds occupied by COVID cases. If you look at the number of beds actually occupied, and this is for other reasons besides COVID, this is for all beds occupied, you'll notice that we're actually a little bit higher than the state with 75% of our beds occupied. So we have more people in the hospital for other regions. If you look at the disease capacity, the disease activity, again, this is looking at our five counties. This shows the trend over time. And you'll notice that back at the end of March, beginning of April, we were averaging in our region over 100 cases per 100,000 in these five counties. Currently, we are at about 60 cases per 100,000. So it's definitely trending back up. It was at one point in the end of May, beginning of June, we were down about 15, 16 cases per 100,000. So there has been an uptick in that. And so between June 20th and July 3rd, and if you go to June 25th through July 8th, where we actually have what they call is confirmed information, we're averaging about 58 cases per 100,000 over a two-week period. If you were to select it at one week, this shows you at one week. And so, for a one-week test count in our population of 1.2, 1.3 million in this five-county region, there have been 352 cases confirmed during this prior week for a rate per 100,000 of roughly 27 per 100,000. And so if you go back to the original, I guess, peak, as some people are calling it, we were at 53. So it kind of just shows it what it looks like in two. Now, what I want to show the Board, because I haven't showed the Council this, but if you were to look at different counties, and I'm just going to select Eastern Washington, where they are, they are having significant increase in cases. And so I'm just going to select the, kind of the central part of Eastern Washington. And you can kind of see where they're looking, what they look like. And then we can look at, whoops, I got to select a few more. They're in a significantly different place than what we are at in Western Washington. Both are seeing an increase, but it's, it is different. And so just want to point that out to Council. And just let us look at that. So, Eastern, Eastern Washington, and I've selected Benton Franklin, Yakima, Adams, Grant. And so it kind of gives you a picture. The population there is not, it's 819,000. And in that same week where we had 1.3 million and 350 cases, they have less population and they've had 1,478 cases. So their rate per 100,000 is almost 200, so they're at 180, 181 per 200,000. If you look at the 14-day window, you'll notice that they didn't have the spike like Western Washington did at the end of March, beginning of April. They have been steadily climbing since the very start of this. And so you'll just notice they just keep going up and up and up. And so, this is what it shows. So that two-week period, they're at a case rate of 400 per 100,000 in those counties. And I could throw in a couple of other ones in there as well, kind of gives you a picture. If I was to look at the Puget Sound Core, and I wouldn't even maybe call it Core, but if I was to throw in- If I was to look at the Puget Sound Corps, and I wouldn't even maybe call it Corps, but if I was to throw in, let's go. Skagit, Pierce, Snohomish, throwing Kitsap as well, and throw in Wacom County, and then a throw in Thurston. You'll see here that they have, it's a population of four point eight, almost four, almost five million people. And in the last two weeks, three, three thousand five hundred and thirty cases in the Puget Sound Corps for a rate per hundred thousand of about seventy-three currently. And again, going back to the start of this outbreak, they were up at eighty-six point seven. So they went down and they've gone back up. And so that is, this is why between this and Western and Eastern Washington is why the pause has been put on, is that significant increase and definitely trending back up in multiple locations. Kind of gives you a picture of of what is going on in the state. And it gives you a different picture looking at it that direction. The other thing I wanted to point out to the board is the R-not value. So this is the effective reproductive rate and number. It's, this shows it over time. And you'll notice that Eastern Washington, the red line, never got below one. And so they have never really had it below one. That's why their trend line has always been basically up. So if you look at those counties, the reproductive rate has been above one. That means that for every case, the folks are giving it to more than one person. And so that's why the trend line continued to go up in Eastern Washington. Whereas, excuse me, in Western Washington, we actually were below one for a significant portion of time. And that's why we dipped down and our rate per hundred thousand went down. It has now gone back up, and it's actually, they figure it's higher than it is in in Eastern Washington. It is trending back down, which is a sign, but there's some big error bars there. And ideally, you would have these error bars below one in order to get out in front of this illness and make sure that you're actually working on a trajectory to eliminate the illness. And so, again, more data on on why the governor and working with his public health team decided to put a pause on these reopening efforts. The other thing I wanted to point out is what Dr. James was talking about with the younger population. And so this is looking at the percent of cases and then also the the distribution, age distribution in six counties. And this is looking at the percent of cases, and if you think this in the last couple of weeks of June, and you'll notice that the big spikes in many counties, the thirty percent plus of cases are in this age group of the twenty to twenty-nine. And then the next bigger bar is in the thirty to thirty-nine-year-olds. If you look at the population distribution of those same counties, that age bracket is about thirteen to fourteen percent. So we are definitely seeing, and in talking to my counterparts around the state, they are seeing this this increase in these cases in this age bracket, this twenty to twenty-nine group. Several counties have reported that there have been large gatherings with some of these groups, whether it's at a house or at a favorite beach or river pullout or whatnot. And so these these groups seem to be moving around more, getting together more. There were also reports that there were large gatherings in all age groups, particularly around Father's Day and some other events, where people weren't adhering to the gatherings of less than five and for phase-two counties and or less than fifty in the phase-three counties. There were many, it sounds like, in in other jurisdictions, based on what was reported on a call that I was on, some very large gatherings with, you know, over a hundred people, a hundred and fifty people at a particular event, which is, you know, again, what causes these large number of cases. And in one particular one, the report was, I believe, up to thirty-plus cases came out of one of those events. So these large gatherings are ripe for spreading the illness and clearly has been demonstrated in the data. And we're clearly seeing that across this state, and I think as a nation, we're seeing that occurring. And so it is definitely a, something that we need to keep our eye on and do messaging to these groups on how to socially distance, wear masks, and the importance of it. Many of these kids are, and this age bracket, not kids, many of these young adults are then working within our various service industries and or in some of our long-term care facilities. And so there there is concern that as it spreads in this group, it may start spreading to some of the other groups that are doing a very good job of trying to socially distance and limit interactions with large groups. So that's really the data that I wanted to report, both on a statewide, regional, and then national level. Hope you can answer any questions that the board may have. And I'll stop sharing my screen if we don't have any questions.
This is Jamie. Mark, did you, did I notice that compared to the state, it looked like the trend? In our, when you were doing our regional trend for disease activity was getting down to around the twenty-five? Twenty-six or twenty-seven? It seemed a lot better than the seventy-two plus for other areas.
Let's just look at our region. So Island County and San Juan County are currently are under twenty-five. The other counties are not. So if you look just at Island and San Juan, we're hovering around fifteen, sixteen percent. And that's a population, of course, mainly driven by Allen County, a little over a hundred thousand, with sixteen cases in the past two weeks. If you add in Skagit, and you add in Snohomish, and then Wacom, Wacom has had a couple larger outbreaks. The two-day, the two-week total is fifty-eight, so not as high as the rest of the Puget Sound. If you go to the one day, and I think this is where it was confusing, I was flipping between one day and fourteen days. So the one-week total is the twenty-seven, the two-week total is the fifty-two, so fifty-eight. Yeah. It's a new feature they added, and so I was flipping back and forth, and I didn't explain that. Sorry about that, Councilmember Stevens.
No, I just noticed the numbers. I thought I'd ask about it.
Yeah.
Mark, this Frank, the the other thing maybe to look at while we're there is the hospitalization rates in Wacom County. Since that is de facto our ICU primarily, I think it's, it'll be a relevant feature in in this, if we just look at the Wacom data. It is an outlier statewide, I think, in in that, certainly in the west, western.
So if you look at the hospital beds occupied, they're at eighty percent. If you look at COVID-related patients, they're at point eight percent. So they're seeing an uptick in hospital bed use for a variety of different issues. And so that, I think that's what Dr. James is talking about. But if you look at for COVID cases, they're down at point eight.
So we're getting infections, but not necessarily hospitalizations?
That, in our region, I would say that's true, and as you as a state, right now, we're seeing a slight uptick based on the data. Again, going from a low of about two and a half percent of hospital beds occupied by COVID up to about three and a half percent of the beds occupied statewide. In our region, it's actually trending down, but as a state, we are seeing an uptick in the number of beds occupied by COVID cases. And so depends on the region and, but as a whole, if you look at it as a whole for the state, we can look at that. I can do that pretty easy. By select all, and look at occupied by COVID patients, we're at three point six. And if you go back in here into mid-June, we're at two point five. So it is going up slightly. It's back about at the rate we were at the beginning of June, which was at three point six. So over the last month, it's gone up about a percentage point. And so, and then if you look at some regions, it's actually, well, you can just click here on on Yakima. You can see that they're at over ten percent of their beds occupied. Whereas back in beginning of July, they're at twenty-three point seven. So they're trending in the right direction, but, you know, they're they're still above ten. Go next door to Benton County, they're actually trending up. And so when you look at it as a whole, there's been a slight uptick.
I I think, though, the point you're you're making is that it is that, Jamie, is that it is a function of age, and younger people are not nearly as likely to be hospitalized. And I think what we're seeing is a second wave essentially, and this wave is different fundamentally, it's demographic. Younger people are getting it. They're less likely to die. They're less likely to be hospitalized. That's definitely true.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other question? Of Mark?
So that's, yeah, that's the data piece, Dale. I will go ahead and then talk about, the next item on the agenda was our application. And so the status of that, I think Kyle's already covered this. So, oh, not quite a month ago, when the Board of Health met and made a recommendation, the council also made that recommendation. We submitted our application. And a week later, the state announced that they had put a pause on all applications through July sixteenth. The governor announced yesterday that he extended that through July twenty-eighth. I was asked a question regarding what that meant for our application. And initially, I assumed, and I always hate to assume, so I actually called the state, but I assumed that we'd have to reapply. When I talked to the state last week, late last week on Friday, they had indicated to me, this is before the governor extended the the pause, that we would not have to reapply, that that it would sit there and that the DOH would review our data at the time, which would, in this case, would have been on the sixteenth. And if the information met their criteria, they would continue to process our application. Now that they've extended it two more weeks, I don't know what that means. And so I don't know, being that it would be two more weeks and essentially a month since, a little over a month since we submitted our application, if we would have to reapply. I'd have to recheck with them. The other thing that I did ask is if there was a process to withdraw an application and the process would be submitting a an email from, in this case, it'd be me. If if the council, since the council is the one that directed the application to be submitted, it would be an email from myself asking the the state to, and asking the state to withdraw our application at that time. And so things have changed slightly since I got that information with the announcement yesterday afternoon from the governor. And I have not had an opportunity to contact the state to see if that then changed their perception of if it was on hold, if they would just look at our data, or if they would make us reapply. So I do know, like I said from last week, that they initially said they could, they would just look at our and review our data that they had, and we would not have to resubmit. So I don't know if there's any questions on any of that or on the the amount of time it takes to actually complete the application.
Well, we have on the table Frank's recommendation that we withdraw the app, the application. And that will need to be addressed and voted on by the Board of Health today. Do the members of the Board of Health have questions they want to ask relative to the application process?
Mark, how much, if we just let it sit there and at some point in the future, and they review it, and so that would seem to me, it would just be an updating of the numbers of the data.
Yes, what what I was informed by the DOH person that I talked to is that they would, they would actually, DOH would actually review our data. At the time, the governor and the State Department of Health made a decision to process applications again.
And it seems like it took a lot of time by a lot of people to prepare the application to begin with.
That's a fair assessment, Jamie. It it's, I don't know, almost ten pages, and it included getting, of answering questions and reviewing data and then, you know, analyzing the information, and then also getting letters from the hospitals. And and so it's it's not, it's not something that you just do in in an hour. It takes multiple hours and multiple people reviewing, providing input and information, at least the application, the way it was laid out the last time.
And are they changing that application? Do you know?
Not that I heard of, no.
Okay, thank you.
Mark, if if Frank came out with his recommendations to move to phase three, but there were some conditions included in his recommendations. For instance, museums and libraries may open safely, and gyms and pools at fifty percent capacity. If between now and July twenty-eighth, Frank deems it inappropriate to have museums and libraries open, for instance. Would that, and and he eliminates that from the recommendation. Would that negate the application and we'd have to start over? Or can that just be a single item that could be changed and passed by the state? Do you know?
That's a good question, Dale. My understanding is they would review the application as submitted and reviewed by the Board of Health and the county council at that time. And so if there was a request to modify our application, so as the council and the board knows, we submitted a modified application. There was things that we said that we did not want. If you wanted to modify that further, you would have to go back, my my belief, you'd have to go back through the process to go through and review that new recommendation, have the Board of Health look at that, pass that forward to the council, and then go through. So I believe that would take a whole new application.
So my understanding from Dr. James is that he would not expand restaurant in in restaurant dining to seventy-five percent based on his recommendation to withdraw the app.
When you're ready, I can talk about that.
Any other questions from the board? Because I think we do need to hear from Frank at this point. Frank, go ahead.
Well, a few things. One is that I think several fundamental things have changed, that we we've learned things we didn't know before. And our situation nationally and the state have changed substantially, as well as our own circumstance. Let me just briefly review. One thing that I think has been known for some time but is now becoming part of public policy is that aerosolized spread does occur. The situation which aerosolized spread does occur is is fundamentally in enclosed spaces where people are not protected by masks. The specific example of that would be in restaurants, in restrooms, in places that may not have adequate airflow in them to disperse the virus. And since people have their masks off while they're eating or drinking, that is a significant risk. And I think we have more clarity about the level of that risk. There are a number of states that have rolled dining back to zero, none. I think we need to listen to that. That's a fundamental change that we didn't know about the last time we talked about this. The level of rise in our state, I think, is being effectively addressed by the governor. And I see the data tentatively as turning down and that we may be approaching the crest or maybe even just past the crest of this particular outbreak here. However, at the national level, we see an unprecedented rise in cases, so much so that it's limiting our ability to get testing done in our own community. The delay in testing is a critical feature. That too is new. Having to wait six days for one of the tests and the ones we just Having to wait six days for one of the tests and the ones we just are responding to right now allows for the disease to spread significantly to others prior to our even knowing about it. So I believe there are fundamental changes that have occurred since our last application. And I believe we need to restructure our application to respond to those. Specifically, with respect to food establishments. I think it's possible to keep our restaurants open, but it's going to require flexibility and initiative on our part. I think we need to move to outdoor dining as much as possible. Largely, a good deal of dining in our community is done outdoors already or as takeout. I think those are things I'm comfortable with. I am increasingly uncomfortable with indoor dining. I think we need to evaluate and make a new recommendation about that, that is not included in our current application. I'm perfectly comfortable with the other things that we approved. Museums and libraries, I think, are capable of functioning appropriately, as are gyms and pools, as are government services that are public facing. Those are the fundamental things that are there. And I think the fundamentals have not changed with respect to those activities. The other thing is that we also tie Stage 1, excuse me, Phase 2 and Phase 3 to the level of accommodation which is made available to the public to travel here. As we're all very aware, there is local travel only in Phase 2. That is, of course, somewhat ambiguous. The governor has not enforced that. He's not provided a mechanism of enforcement and been fairly permissive. For many communities, that makes little difference. For tourist communities, it makes a very, very substantial difference. I think that we need to examine that and examine whether, to the extent to which we want to move forward with inviting additional tourists here in the current circumstance of an expanding wave of disease. Again, I think that's a fundamental piece of our application that needs to be rethought and potentially retooled. The last thing is that there were two additional recommendations I made last time that my recommendation was contingent upon. The first was limiting advertising to attract people to come here, which I think was addressed by the council. The other one, though, was bringing staff on board, perhaps through the Board of Health itself, to do education about social distancing and mask wearing. Our rule is very clear and very simple and has worked extremely well. The reason we are where we're at today is because of our masking rule and people's broad acceptance of that and the implementation of it. When we bring visitors here, many will comply with that rule. Some will not even know about it. My experience on the ferry was I saw 68 people not properly masked in the ferry building out of their cars. That was sobering, to say the least. We need to make an effort to make that different. We need to make sure those people know the reasons that they're expected to wear masks and if they are not wearing them, to talk with them about it. I'm not suggesting we find them. I'm suggesting that we find a better information tool to inform people of what local rules are and the governor's rules are and what our expectations are as a community. If we don't do that, I believe that puts our community at risk. So I was surprised that didn't, wasn't fully discussed and wasn't acted on. And I do anticipate, I would hope that it is considered and taken seriously. So those are my reasons for believing that I think we need to withdraw our application at this point in time. There is little that would be salvaged by keeping it. All the work of the data collection, all the work of approvals, all the bulk of the work in this application would still need to be redone if we could apply today. I think in addition, we need to rethink how we're going to provide restaurant services, food service services in our community and increase and enhance and make easier takeout food as much as we can and expand the possibility. Other communities have done some very creative things. They have closed portions of the street to allow restaurants more space for outdoor dining. We need to look at all the ways and engage with our community partners that are restaurant tours. How can we do this and do it safely? That would be a new proposal, not the one currently there. If done correctly, I think we could even consider moving to 75%. But because of aerosolized spread, I'm very uncomfortable moving forward to 75% without it being outdoor dining or curbside service. Those are my thoughts. I'm happy to discuss them. I have actually questions for the Board of Health. I'm very interested in finding out what initiatives you would suggest for limiting travel, local travel in Phase 2 and how we can address that should we move to Phase 3. How are we going to manage it in Phase 2 even now? Clearly, there is not the kind of limitation I believe was envisioned by the governor in Phase 2 at this point. The second thing is, if you won't accept my suggestion about additional educational enforcement of masking, what other options are there? I don't believe it's an issue we can casually ignore. We have not yet had a person die from this disease in our county. We need to have that as a goal. We need to make every effort to achieve that goal. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah, Dr. Dave, go ahead, Jamie.
Dr. James, you said you're uncomfortable in, or look at the application and retool in regards to accommodations. And you've limited accommodations to 50% in Phase 2 and Phase 3 at the application. So what are we retooling there?
No, in moving into Phase 3, we wouldn't be the same as 2. We increase the effective availability of transient accommodation in Phase 3. It's not in, it is in my order that that's the way that it works.
But it's, I guess what I'm saying is that part is independent of the application because that is not part of the metric the state's requiring, so.
No, no, it is.
You don't have to retool the application to do that.
So Jamie, the issue is how do we restrict travel? How do we limit people coming?
But I'm asking a specific question concerning accommodation.
You're exactly right. It's not about going into Phase 3. It's about our failure to do that at this point in time, in Phase 2. That's my question. That's why I phrased it the way that I did. If we go to Phase 3, it would mean an expansion.
So, but doesn't have to though. And your, I guess what I'm saying is your strategy is to limit visitation to the islands. It sounds like.
Yes, we have several tools to do that. One is the governor's phase strategy and the second one is our own ordinances that are my order that, for masking and for limiting travel to the islands. And they are separate. What we did was we linked them so that they changed automatically when we changed phases. They could be delinked, that's true. But what I'm suggesting is that even in Phase 2, the intent of the governor's phasing is not being accomplished. And we need to think about that. I don't know the answer, Jamie. I would be very open to input and suggestions about how we can regulate that, that aspect. And for many counties, the reason it's not a big part of the governor, they're not counties that are heavily impacted by tourism like we are.
There's other counties that are heavily impacted by outside forces, like along the Idaho border.
Are not. Sure, there's Shaland County, there's Grayson, there's other places that are. But, you know, it is a unique treat, a small subset of counties.
I just know that from our traffic counts that we've been taking since this began and from the ferry ridership, we have limited, we have limited travel to the islands. And that includes our locals that are going over to the mainland for doctors' appointments, et cetera.
Yeah, before the tourists were active on the ferries, it was about 2,000 a day. Now it's about 7,000 or so. I mean, so yeah, it's certainly lower than what we routinely see, that's true.
And.
Dr. James? Oh, sorry, James.
Can I just ask one last question? So I had the question yesterday and I have to say, I didn't feel like I got an answer then. And it was of Mark and I still feel like we don't have an answer. When we applied to Phase 3, we said we had enough people to, and we had a system set up to be able to do contact tracing and follow-up. We have the same system now. We have had three additional cases. My question was, we need to, and are willing, I believe, at least I am, to get people trained up to either give the current team a rest or to be able to handle additional cases. And I guess I'm just confused because the answer was, we have people trained, but they don't have enough experience. It's just, why can't we activate these people? And the governor has made the National Guard available to help do contact tracing. I mean, regardless of the phases, I think that we need to do something about this. And I think the means are available and I don't know why we're not doing it.
So before you answer, Dr. James, I just want to recognize that both Kyle Davies and Noel Monan have joined the meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you, Bill.
So Jamie, I'm just speaking about our staff. So just to be perfectly clear, the last physician I talked to on the phone was in tears. Okay, a physician on one of our islands trying to provide care. The level of conflict and the level of challenge is immense. So our hospital, we had a meeting with them yesterday about testing. They are experiencing incredible frustration and burnout, as are many other providers. So it's not, we don't exist in a vacuum. We have to have our clinical providers with us. We can't do this, we don't do this alone. So, and in addition, I have to say that our critical staff are exhausted, exhausted. I'm exhausted. I've been on call every day for many hours for three and a half months. You just need to know that it's one thing to say these things, it's a different thing to make them a reality. So, yeah, we have some people that are smart, that want to learn, that can do it. But contact investigation means you call somebody up. You have to elicit who they've been in contact with. You have to have a trusting relationship. There are people that are really skilled at that. Most of them are STD workers that have had to call people up and say, who are the three people you last slept with? That's not a conversation you can have easily. When people know there's a big impact to this and it might affect their family, it might affect their business, it might affect, you know, the financial well-being of the institution they work for when they're an employee. These are extremely difficult conversations. And even our best-trained nurses, some of them aren't good at it. They can't do it very well. So it's one thing to say we've got people that are trained and knowing the mechanics is a very different thing. And I would invite you to come and talk with our staff about it. I would like you to do that, to find out why the seemingly easy thing is not easy. If it was easy, you would have done it.
I understand that. And I'm just saying, why are we not taking advantage of the help that is trying to be made available to help alleviate all of those concerns? Because I have those concerns and I've had them for about six weeks.
Jamie, this is Mark.
Perception that we're not doing it. We are using, we are using those people. And we are bringing them on board, we are training them, we are giving them experience. It isn't an accurate perception. Now, is it enough? Is it quick enough? Is it nimble enough? What I'm telling you is that we're at the edge of our ability to do that, okay? We're right on the edge.
Jamie, this is Mark. And I will tell you that we're going to talk about the continuity of operations plan coming up. And so Kyle and I have had discussions. I've talked with my counterparts in other counties. And so we're working on a plan to address some of these very issues. And so we'll roll that out.
All right, so this is Councilmember Watson. And I just want to reiterate Mr. Stevens' input in maybe different words. So, Dr. James, I think what's being offered here is additional resources at your disposal to help alleviate the stress in the system and the stress on the people that are currently performing the duties. So it's an offer to you and Mark and our other managers that we're open to hearing proposals of how to get additional resources to alleviate some of the stress and strain that's in the system and that's on the existing personnel to make it easier all the way around. All right, and I guess Mr. Stevens and I would second that. Our, you know, looking for proposals from staff, Dr. James and Mark, on ways we might be able to assist you in augmenting the existing resources so that there's less burden, you know, spread across more people.
Just to respond, I mean, we have been successful because we're implementing your policies. Your policies have been far sighted. We've had the resources we need in terms of the opportunity to get additional people on board. And I very much appreciate that. I mean, I am acutely aware, the county has a big deficit it's got to deal with. I really appreciate your support. We have hired people. We've got a new person in testing today that's an extraordinarily well-trained nurse who we were able to steal away from the emergency room, actually. I felt bad about that, but not bad enough not to do it. She's going to be, it's going to make our testing system work to have that staff person there. But these other things are not the resource. We have the people. It's actually the training and the work that we have to do, combined with the fact that our counterparts, the people I have to call at night to say, who are these people? What can we do? The doctors and the nurses that work in the clinics in our community, not employed by us. They are exhausted. And we all know we've been working for months. We also all know that a marathon, not a sprint. We got till Christmas to do this. And I don't mean to whine publicly about it. In fact, I want to say, I appreciate your support. It's the right thing to do. You've done a great job. It's not that I'm begging for money. It's that you just need to understand the process of bringing those people on board and training them and getting them up to speed isn't something that's done quickly. And there's a learning the protocol part. And then there's finding the people that can actually do that, that have the skillset that can tactfully ask someone and strategize how and when you ask questions so that you don't turn the person off and you get accurate information. We have people that lie to us for a whole bunch of different reasons. And sometimes it takes three or four telephone calls to get all the information right. And some people are just a lot more skillful at that. You know, in your own experience, there are some people that are very sensitive and have a way of getting inside of the people. And there's other people that don't. You can give the same training to both person, both people, but only one of them is going to be able to do this job.
All right, so again, we want to make sure that if additional resources were necessary, you understood that we were open to hearing proposals. I deflected Mr. Hughes now, who had a question.
Thank you, Chair.
Back online, so.
Thank you.
Who's speaking? I'm online. Rick, I'm sorry, my phone keeps dropping the call, so I have to keep calling back in. But go ahead, please. And then I would like to get back to the topic of talking about the Phase 3 variants. Need to go from that. I appreciate this conversation about the needs of staff. And that may be an ongoing dialogue we need to have. But we do have an agenda item that needs to be addressed as well. Rick, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I just wanted to point out to the audience that both Kyle and Noel have joined, as Mr. Watson said, but I just wanted to let everyone know that there was a medical emergency they had to attend to, which is why they were not here at the start of the meeting. Dr. James, I want to let you know that first and foremost, I fully support all the work that you and the many people in the Health and Human Services Department and volunteers are doing. I'm more than willing to sit down, not that I think it's necessary, but meet with each staff and answer questions or ask questions, as I would assume my seatmates are as well. I don't think that was the intent of the conversation. I have one issue with what you said, that you. of the conversation. I have one issue with what you said, that you were, I can't remember the exact term, but you were baffled that we didn't take action on the plan. You gave us a plan, but not how to do it. Tell us how to do it, and we'll execute it. I don't know what that means, to send people around to tell them to wear masks. You know, how many people do you need in Orcas? How many people do you need in Lopez? How many people do you need in San Juan? We'll figure out a way to make that happen. But there was not a, we're not supporting or agreeing with you. We just were waiting for a plan and tell us what to do, what we could support. So I support moving forward. I want to look at options to keep restaurants open. I support either pausing or pulling off the application and taking a good advantage of this. And my one question in all of this, and pardon my statement, is I'd like to know, well, I guess a reminder is, I think people need to be paying attention that are locals, that they're as much at risk of spreading things locally as some of the visitors are to us. And I think most of the cases have been from locals. And I just think we need to set off a flare that says, hey, folks, don't let down the guard, keep being safe, and keep washing your hands, and be careful who you're in contact with. So again, I support what you're saying, Dr. James. And my concern was, and it might have been similar to Mr. Stevens, is that two weeks ago, you said we were fine, and today we're not. And I know this is a moving target. But oftentimes, we need to know the parameters of the space of the target, so we can make educated decisions. And it seemed like we were great. And then all of a sudden, now it's not. So I think at least that's been my confusion, is that we need to know the parameters of things on how supportive we can be on programs based on what's going on in that point in time. And I realize a point in time is a point in time, and it changes the next day. But we are fully here to be a team to support our community in whatever direction you and the Health Department, and I think the Board of Health will send us. So thank you, and I apologize with all my problems today in communicating. It might make a lot of you happy, actually, but.
But just to briefly summarize, what's different now is that we now know aerosol ice spread is a real thing, and that can impact things like dining. Secondly, there's been a second wave of disease. We're at the peak of it. And there are cases, lots more cases in Washington State, there are massively more cases at the national level. Thirdly, there's a significant delay in testing in all national labs, and that's impacting us. That's a, the difference between finding out in 24 hours and finding out in six days is the difference between a lot more cases and community spread becoming a reality. And lastly, there really is exhaustion out there, not just in our staff, but in all staff in the county. And we're on a team with them. We can't do our job without them. The nurses and doctors in this county have been, have been working as hard as we've been working, and they're, they're, they're very tired. And we need to find ways to function in a way that's sustainable. And so those are the concerns that I think the things have changed. I think the specific things that I would like to change in our application would be a more effective way of dealing with dining. However that is, many of the other things would be the same. I'm not recommending changes in nurses, in museums and libraries, gyms and pools, government services, public-facing ones. You know, none of those things I think would change. But I think the two biggest things are getting a better handle on how we control the uptick in people visiting. And that would have two phases. One, is there an absolute way to control the numbers? And there may well not be. We may have found the best way that there is already. And then some sort of effective intervention, that's at the point of use, mask wears, and for social distancing.
Thank you, Frank. One of the issues that Frank brought up was this question about education, and having educators available for.
Sounds like Dale may have dropped off.
Sounds like we lost him again. Dale, are you there?
It's my fault. He's there. He just needs to unmute. I muted him because I thought that's where the dog barking was coming from. So my apologies.
This is Dale. I was just, I've been muted off and on for the last minute. One of the things that Frank talked about was education, and providing educators in the island. I'd like to hear from board members about that proposal, or options to get information out to individuals in the island. I think it's Frank's concern that we're not disseminating the information to allow for changes in behaviors, assuming that there are a lot of behaviors going on that are detrimental to the health of our citizens. So I'd like to hear from the board about that. And then I'd like to get back to the discussion about which way we want to go with the variant, the variance application that we had. So let me hear from the board about education that Frank addressed.
Well, I think, this is Jamie. I think Mr. Hughes, and Mr. Watson, and myself, at least, address that, that we're willing to do it if we knew what they were going to do, and what it was going to take.
Okay, if that was the position, I assumed you were talking about getting help for the staff that are overworked. But you're including.
Well, I was talking about both.
Okay, you're talking about both. All right. So then coming up with the proposal.
Yeah, so I think it would take two people, probably, probably one on San Juan, and one for Orcas and Lopez. And I would, I would suggest it might even be a halftime job or something. People that could meet people coming off the ferry, or perhaps even ride on the ferry, to provide literature. Obviously, these would have to be sophisticated people. This would not be somebody, and certainly not a policeman. This would be somebody that can engage people, and say, are you aware of the rules? Here's some information about it. Do you have any questions I could answer? And what I learned from actually the business community is that, I was up at Roach Harbor, and they have a person that does this in their facility. And what they have is a big sign that says, help us stay open. So my recommendation would be a strategy that basically says, help the San Juans stay open. And when you ask somebody to help you, that's really different than preaching at them about what they should be doing or not doing. And I think it would open the most doors. So I think if we could find the right person that had the tact and skill at providing that message, that if we did it on the ferries, at the ferry landing, in the public spaces in our communities, I think we could make the difference in people wearing masks and being respectful or not. And the strategy that I would suggest is a strategy that said, help us keep the San Juan Islands open. And I think that if the business community wanted to partner with us in that, that'd be a great thing, both for their input, but also for financially supporting it. So, because I think that kind of effort will make the difference in whether or not we stay open.
Hey, Martin Brendan, is it possible? I'd like to hear from other Board of Health members about their positions about what Frank is proposing.
I'm John Guiman. Can anyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
You're on, John.
Well, yeah. Frank, you're doing a great job. I agree with your sensitive and comprehensive approach to all of these issues. And as you say, this is a long-term challenge. It's not just now. And it goes all this year, if not longer. So anyhow, I'm in favor, I'm not sure we're quite there yet in the agenda, but in favor of withdrawing our application for three, and keeping going on some of these other areas.
Okay. Thanks, John. Kyle or Noel?
Hi, it's Noel. I'm sorry I'm late. And I missed a lot of the content. We had something to deal with in town that I'm sure you all agree about.
I understand.
I just want to reflect Dr. Guiman's comments. I wholeheartedly agree with him. And that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Okay. Kyle? Is Kyle there? Okay. All right. So I stepped on somebody that wanted to make a comment before I asked for the Board of Health's opinion.
Sorry, Doc, this is Rick Hughes again. My suggestion, I support the education platform or program. If it's possible to have either Brendan, or Mark, or Kyle, to give council a quick, the Board of Health, a quick job description, and what we estimate the cost would be, then we can move on this quickly. I'm not sure how my seatmates feel, but at least from the council perspective, that would be my, or my perspective on council, and the Board of Health, where I would like to go with that to address that issue.
Thank you, Rick. Mark, does that work for you? Brendan?
Well, we have a PIO team, and so I would defer to Brendan, where's been a lot of outreach on mask use. You know, it's, the state is, mask order just went into place. I think we're seeing increased mask use. You know, I, not scientific by any means, but you know, we're talking about the last 10%, I think, of people that need maybe some education. The vast majority, from what I'm seeing, at least in town, granted, I'm not going anywhere, but really walking around town at night. And what I'm hearing is, the vast majority of folks are wearing masks. And so cracking that last 10% is not necessarily easy. And I'm not sure we'd even get there. But I defer to Brendan on what his efforts are, and what maybe additional things he could do. Brendan?
Yeah, I mean, thanks for that. And I appreciate the discussion. And Dr. James' point is a valid one. And certainly, you know, Dr. James and I, beginning more than a month ago, have done walkabouts in Friday Harbor, just talking to people, and doing education, and handing out masks and posters to folks. And that's something I've been doing, not all the time, but on a regular basis, even without Dr. James, and including a trip to Orcas that I did with Councilmember Hughes. I just think, certainly I think that I and everyone else are always welcome to have more help. But I also think that understanding the need on the exact mission of that position is important. Maybe, and I haven't had much time to think this through, but just off the top of my head, maybe a starting place would be to expand a little bit the walkabout program with Dr. James and myself, and perhaps Mark and Kyle, and maybe even Board of Health or council members, just dedicate some time on Friday afternoons and weekends, to get out there and really understand what the needs are, and have those direct interactions with folks. And I think if we focus on that for a little bit, it'll really help us understand the challenge, and maybe best how to solve that challenge. So certainly, whatever the council and the Board of Health come up with, I'm more than happy to support. But I guess I'm just sort of a methodical thinker, and want to make sure we've put some time in defining the need. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Brendan. I would be willing to do a walkabout with you, Brendan, on Orcas Island. So let me know, and see if we can't get some information. My experience on Orcas has been, the majority of people I see are masked. And I was on in E Sound over the 5th of July, and I only saw a family of three. One was a child of four, coming out of a restaurant without a mask, but they had masks around their necks. So they were, they were prepared to put the mask on, I assume. So I haven't seen it as a significant problem on Orcas. And that the businesses, the grocery store, hardware store, everyone has been masked. So I think getting a database would be helpful. I'm willing to help if there are other members of the board that want to do that. That might be a good starting point.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Go ahead, Bill.
Oh, thank you. So I just wanted to point out that, you know, there's been a lot of work by the local businesses. A lot of them have posters up. The Visit Viral has a Stay Safe page, and made some posters for businesses that are trying to communicate, you know, about the mask-wearing, and the stay safe, and the handwashing. So there have been some local efforts, individually and by, you know, business groups, on trying to communicate the need and the desire. I suspect that, you know, the non-mask-wearing people are intentionally non-mask-wearing. Sure, there's probably some that, you know, have forgotten, or, you know, left, or it's accidental, non-mask-wearing. But I think it's, you know, I think it's a good idea to have an additional effort as far as community outreach, and how we can sort of pull ourselves all together. I noticed Roach Harbor has a, you know, great sign and strategy, which Dr. James referenced, which was, you know, help us to stay open kind of deal. And that's a good message versus, you know, keep it as healthy, or keep yourself healthy. It's all about trying to keep, you know, the facilities and the businesses open. And so, you know, trying to keep the islands open, I think, would be a good message to use as a fundamental campaign outreach.
Mr. Chair, this is Kyle Davies. I'm not sure if you can hear me now.
Yep, we got you, Kyle.
Okay. My apologies, like Noel, for the absence. And forgive me if this has been covered already. And thanks to Dale for the opportunity. My, my, my comment, I guess, or my addition would be, you know, in my role, I don't know that I see things differently than other people, but I certainly have a slightly different relationship, I think, with the public sometimes. And I'm all for the educational approach, the idea of ask over tell. I like Brendan's idea. I'd be happy to be out and part of that work on the street. And my thoughts and comments are in no way an indictment of the work that the EOC and staff and Health Department are doing. But I think there is space between where we are now on a daily basis, and where we need to be in order to be able to take some pressure off our system, and keep it, keep this county open at the level that people really are wanting. And I'm not convinced that some of the other players, including state ferries, and the sheriff's office, and the businesses to some extent, are fully doing the part that I, that I see them valued for. And, you know, I would love to have a conversation, and again, if this has come up and been asked and answered, my apologies. But I'd love to have a conversation, this body, with some of the other, some of those other players, and hear from them, particularly ferries and the sheriff's office, and make sure we are, we are getting the information out, and they're participating and able to help us message. And certainly for me, as a medical provider, and our other first responder folks, demonstrating the behaviors that we're looking for. So I think we're, by the day, doing a better job at that level. But I just feel like there's room, I would, I'm glad Dale's seeing, the chair is seeing better compliance in E Sound. I would say, that's not my experience in, on San Juan, and Friday Harbor, and Roach Harbor every day. And I think that education is the first place to go. If that's more budget money made available to the Health Department in order to staff that, I'm all for it. I don't think that's the, I don't think that's the easy lift. That's my input.
Thank you, Kyle. Any other comments from the board? You know, one thing that is providing information, I don't understand why we can't get the Department Transportation to put signage at each ferry landing, when people are coming off the island, that says, keep our island safe, wear your mask. So that if people are reminded immediately that masks are required in the San Juan Islands. Frank's observations at Roach were very elucidating as to how to proceed without putting people in a defensive position, or an aggressive position. So I would like to see that kind of signage around all of the islands as well.
Hey, Dale, this is Brendan. I just want to chime in quickly, if I could.
You go.
I just, I don't want us to take too many cracks at ferries, because their staff have been very, very cooperative in posting any messaging that we want to get posted on the ferries. And they have used the reader board, the very large reader board at the Anacortes Ferry Terminal, to put up pretty clear messages that masks are required in San Juan County. And that dates way back to before the governor's order on masking. So not to say that there's not more that can be done, but ferries has been a nice partner so far.
Well, unfortunately, I did not mean to disparage the, the ferries at all, but just thinking about how we might access getting information to people.
Yeah, that's fair.
Yeah.
I just wanted to point out that the, the, it's been pointed out to me a number of times, I've gone down and checked it several times, and the, the, the ferry, the contract ferry workers, not the employees, but the contracts, at least at Friday Harbor, routinely do not wear masks. Um, so, so I think there is, uh, they, they, they have done some good work, they, I think they could do more.
All right. I will, I, I will pro, I will talk with Mark following this meeting about proceeding with ways to get, uh, the possibility of educators on board and to do what Brandon, uh, suggested, walkarounds, trying to get in a, an idea of what the needs might be, and then get back to council with a recommendation, if that works for everyone.
Sounds good.
Mr. Chair, I have one kind of additional question. This is Kyle Davies again.
Yes.
Uh, I, I'm struggling with, so if we stay in Phase Two, um, and that includes non-essential travel by governor's orders, where, I mean, I feel like, I, I don't have a lot of answers, I don't know if I have any, but I feel like we're failing on some distinct levels, we're failing, and I, I appreciate the, the, the position that puts businesses in, um, but I see, uh, and I appreciate Brendan's comments about the ferries, I, I, I don't mean to disparage either, but that, that conveyance is, uh, it's a, it's a state agency that is, um, continuing to allow non-essential travel, it seems like, to, I, I just, there are, it's making more, that piece alone is making more work, and, you know, it's not my, those aren't my, that's not the scale that I made up. It's, it's, uh, it, it's in place, I think, for good reason, and it's one of the pieces that we're working, uh, we can educate as much as we want, but we're working uphill against that component by itself.
All right. Thank you, Kyle. Um, any other comments? I'd like to move on to talk about the, uh, application and come to resolution as to how we'll proceed, whether we withdraw the application as recommended by the Health Officer, Dr. James, or hold, put it on hold until July 28th, where we, when we see which way the governor is going to go. So, I open up that.
Information, Dale? I, I, I think the application is indeed the council's. I don't think it's, it's not my application, it's not the Health, or Board of Health's application. I think we simply recommend. I've recommended the Board of Health one course of action. I think it's up to the Board of Health to recommend a, 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 a course of action to the council, and I think the council, at the end of the day, is, since their application is, is theirs to do with as they will, in, in my view. Um, and so I, I think the Board of Health, rather than deciding, would be recommending.
Right, right. I understand that, and John made that clear at our last board meeting, talking about the process, so, um, I understand that, and I hope the board does as well. But I would like to, uh, open that conversation to see what the Board of Health feels. Do we, do we want to, um, uh, withdraw the application, or do we want to hold it, uh, in place until after the 28th and the governor's announcement, uh, and make those recommendations or that recommendation to the county council?
Uh, well, I, here, uh, John Guiman here. I think we should stay in Phase Two now, uh, however we, uh, do with, uh, the application, but stay in Phase Two, and I would note that 24 of our public comments, 20 of 24 want to stay in Two as well.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I notice that as well, John. Okay, any other comments? But would you, John, would you say keep the variance rather than withdraw it and then review it in two weeks' time, or withdraw it and if need be, start a new application at that time?
Well, I, I would, uh, lean on Frank's best way to do that. It's, uh, I think I was hearing, and, and correct me if I heard it wrong, Frank, but...
I'm enjoying it, because I keep getting emails from people running to it, so, so what are, what?
That we might need a new application whenever we try to go to Three, is that correct?
It, it was my position, John, that, that I think that some of the fundamental issues have changed, and I think we would want to change, uh, some of the detail about expanding food establishments and, and require that that entail an outdoor component and, and do the work necessary to facilitate that process actually being a real option for restaurants, and then...
That sounds like a new application, yeah.
Okay. Okay, other board members, what is your, uh, uh, opinion?
This is Noel. I, I agree, a new application's appropriate. The, the, uh, the playing field's changed significantly, and I think we just need to, um, go through that process again.
So, withdraw, you're saying we should withdraw it now and, and, and address it in two weeks if need be, right?
That's, that's my opinion, sir. Thanks.
Okay, great. Thank you. Kyle?
Mr. Chair, I'd say essentially the same thing, withdraw the, uh, Phase Three, modified to Phase Three application now, and whether it's the 28th or any time that Frank and team feel we're in, on the proper footing and, uh, have a good sense of the landscape then to, to reapply in the, if it's an option, even in the future. That'd be my position. Thanks.
Okay. Rick? What is your position?
Um, I support withdrawing the, uh, application and, and taking a look at the science and following Dr. James's suggestions and moving forward. It doesn't, uh, hurt for us to take a pause and, uh, see how conditions on the ground play out, um, and, you know, as, if things change, we made a decision at a point in time, and I think some of the information's different now than it was a few weeks ago, so, uh, I would support a removal or a pause.
Okay. Thank you, Rick. Jamie?
I, I support just letting it, letting it lie. Um, there's been other things, other proclamations the governor's extended all the way into August. I, right now, I see that happening. Things have changed in the last two weeks, and they'll change in the next two weeks, so, um, I support just, uh, letting it stay where it is.
Okay. Thank you, Jamie. Bill?
Uh, I'm waiting to hear what your opinion is there, Dr. Dale.
Um, I, I think the way things have been changing and looking at what's happening statewide, um, I, I, and I, I think that, that it would be appropriate to withdraw and start, uh, process again based on the new information that comes up in, in two weeks. So, that's my, that's my opinion. What's yours, Bill?
Um, so, I, I'm gonna agree with that, but I would suggest that a non-council member of the Board of Health, um, make some kind of motion for a Board of Health recommendation to the county council.
Well, that's what, that was fol, that's what I intended to do after this roll call of opinions, so do I hear a motion?
Yes, uh, Simon, I would like to make a motion that we withdraw the application for Three.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second. This is Noel.
Noel, okay. Any further discussion?
Uh, just point of order, I think, to, to Dr. James' point, we're, we're not withdrawing, we're recommending to the council to withdraw.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. Okay. So, I would like to do a, 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 hear roll call for and against, so, John?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Um, Kyle?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jamie? Jamie, did it?
Yeah, it's muted.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, Bill?
Abstaining.
I'm sorry, Bill, I didn't hear that.
Abstaining.
Again?
I am abstaining.
You are abstaining. Okay, thank you. And, um, Dale Heisinger says yes. So, we have five yays, one nay, and one abstaining. So, the motion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I will do it verbal, and then opposed, we did it already, I know. Um, the motion passes with five yays, one nay, and one abstention. Thank you very much. Um, I think we can move on now if there's any other discussion about the, um, this motion and moving on, or, or holding the variance. So, Kyle, we'll, we'll proceed to air quality monitor. You there, Kyle?
Yes. Thank you, Chair.
Okay.
So, um, thank you all, board. Uh, we're gonna talk about something a little different than COVID, something that has been, uh, on the radar the last couple of years, something that we have discussed about, and in the midst of, of everything else we're doing, uh, I wanted to make sure that I was still continuing to push forward, um, our program goal to develop, uh, a network of local air quality, uh, monitors, um, where we have county-specific data, uh, and I'm talking specifically about, uh, Particular Matter 2.5, um, which is, uh, the most useful measure of, um, smoke levels for, uh, health effects. Um, and, uh, we're, we're all familiar with the, uh, health concern of smoke exposures, and we have had some, uh, periods of time in the, in the last, over the last several years, um, where we have been, uh, affected for, for weeks at a time, and, um, we've had to rely on, um, kind of what our gut feeling has been, um, about our air quality, uh, and not having, uh, true data, uh, when it comes to making, um, public health recommendations, um, on those. So, I'm going to, uh, I sent the board a couple of links, um, this morning, um, related to items that I was going to share, and the first one I'm gonna click on, uh, is the Washington, uh, Department of Ecology, uh, Washington Air Monitoring Network, and, um, so as I said, uh, Particular Matter 2.5 is, uh, routinely collected and reported by Ecology, uh, from both, uh, their, uh, area outdoor air quality monitors and also those of local clean air agencies. And to highlight, um, the reason that this, uh, project was a priority for us is you can see, uh, when we zoom into, uh, our county, we have several, uh, monitors, uh, in neighboring counties, uh, but no county-specific, uh, monitoring data. Um, we did a, uh, project, uh, in the beginning of 2019, where we had Department of Ecology bring up, uh, one of their mobile trailers, uh, and that summary report, uh, was released, uh, last August after, uh, five months of data collection, and, uh, you'll recall that the, the summary conclusions were that air quality was generally good, um, throughout the duration, uh, of the study, um, and that, uh, Particular Matter 2.5 levels, uh, generally, uh, tracked that of, uh, neighboring air quality monitors. Um, but again, in conversations with the board, uh, it was determined that, uh, we still have a priority of, of moving forward to get local, uh, some, some local data here. So, I, I moved forward and, um, determined that the most cost-effective, um, monitors, uh, again, they were, they were, uh, very reasonable, um, and they, I, I landed on Purple Air, and so that's the second link that I, uh, have clicked over to for those that aren't, uh, on the Skype call. And, uh, for the reasons that they're, uh, they're cost-effective, um, we can get real-time data, and that the, uh, data in real-time is easily accessed, um, by both the public, um, and I can link this to our website, um, through the online mapping tool. Um, so, moved forward and, uh, purchased, uh, three units. They are now installed, uh, one on San Juan, uh, right in Friday Harbor here, uh, one in Lopez Village, and, uh, one in East Sound. So, uh, you all can, uh, click on these and, um, play around with the, uh, different, different data reporting features. Again, I am on, uh, real-time data, and so this 10 is, uh, 10 part per million, uh, currently being read at the Orcas Senior Center Air Quality Monitor. Um, there are different reporting measures, different, uh, time horizons as well. I'm not gonna go through all those in, in detail, understanding where we are with, with time, um, but you guys can, uh, click through and, um, determine for yourself, um, how best, uh, that you want to review the data. Um, we can do, uh, 10-minute rolling averages, um, several longer time horizons, but I think when it comes down to, if we do have an, uh, event where we are impacted, um, these, uh, local air quality monitors, uh, will be very helpful, uh, in making public health recommendations, specifically around, um, school closures, outdoor sporting events, um, outdoor public events, uh, as we, as we found ourselves trying to make recommendations, uh, a couple summers ago when we were, uh, fairly inundated, uh, due to wildfire smoke from British Columbia. So, um, I, I will point out that, uh, there are a couple other monitors, uh, one on San Juan Island, uh, out on Katy Mountain, uh, that is a private individual, and then the other monitor that you'll see in the county, uh, is up, uh, on Buck Mountain, and you'll notice that, uh, this monitor, uh, is outlined by a black circle, and that, that just indicates that that is, that is an indoor air quality sensor, and that information is down there, um, in the, uh, in the table below where it talks about, uh, the different ranges, um, as well. So, the different, different colors that you see, uh, line up with the, uh, federal EPA AQI or Air Quality Index, and the state is still working, uh, there has been a lot of good work to line up our, uh, Washington Air Quality Advisory Index with the federal Air Quality Index. You may recall that I spoke a little bit about that, uh, last fall. Um, there have been some discrepancies, um, that are, are, are being worked out, and I think we're, we're closer on aligning the two, um, but, but for the purposes of, uh, this, this project, uh, we at least have, have specific numbers now available, um, that we can go back to, uh, our Washington Air Quality Index, uh, and align those, uh, when it comes time to making public health recommendations. So, um, that was the presentation I was prepared to give. I'm certainly open to answer any questions, um, about that information.
Carlos and Dale, thank you. I missed part of your, uh, presentation. Are these, uh, air quality monitors that we have, or are these here for a temporary period of time?
No, these were, I, I purchased these, so these three, um, these three are, are gonna be part of, uh, our ongoing, uh, monitoring network.
Great. Thank you, Kyle.
Yes.
Good work. Any other questions from the board? Okay, you'll move on? Yeah, go ahead.
Kyle Davies, I have a, a quick one. I don't know, Mr. Dodd, if you could, uh, minimize or shrink down your map, but I can see there's, uh, there's a station in Victoria, and I'm assuming from the other map... And I'm assuming from the other map that there's some kind of along the I-5 corridor. Are there, are there any in lower B.C. that are using the same units and also matching up with the U.S. EPA numbers? Yeah, I haven't, I haven't explored too much in lower B.C. I am familiar with the Victoria site. I do see one out here in Sook as well. But we can continue to, now that, now that ours are on the same platform, look into comparing our numbers with Victoria. So Particulate Matter 2.5 isn't, isn't obviously just from wildfire smoke. That's, that's kind of the main ongoing pollution source that we would be inundated over long periods of time with. It is also from combustion engines. So in areas where you have a lot of vehicle traffic, truck traffic, diesel emissions, you're going to see higher levels as well, which is on a, on a bright sunny day like this. I'm guessing that that's the result of the higher level there in Victoria.
Okay, thanks. I, I, this is Dr. James. We looked at this in detail with the last smoke event. And you can actually see both the smoke events. You can also basically see when a big diesel-powered ship goes up, up between Canada and the U.S., you can see the impact of that actually as well. There'll be these very sharp spikes that drop back down as they pass by. So I think it's, it's quite a sensitive system. I'm really happy that we got it in place before the summer where there could be wildfire events. It'll be a, a good ongoing air quality monitoring effort on our part. As all of you may know, we get dinged routinely for our not having good air quality in, in the annual assessment of health status in, in the various counties in, in Washington State. And I think their methodology, I believe, was flawed. And I think hopefully what we're going to see with this data is that we, in fact, despite the fact that RoboJohnson has had that opinion of us based on their methodology, that this will allow us to, to be more comfortable with the fact that there really isn't significant pollution, air pollution in our community. So I think there's a, there's another additional function that it plays for. And, and you can look up and down the coast and you can see areas that have extraordinary and sustained levels of air pollution with these, these particular tools. So I, I think it's a big step forward. Thank you very much, Kyle, for getting that done.
Yeah, that's good. All right. Anything else on air quality? Hey Dale?
Move on. Yeah, this is, this is Mark. And we're, we're approaching a half hour beyond our normal time. The council had a meeting scheduled at 1:30. I understand. I know Connie's put some time into a PowerPoint and got a great strategy to work with our providers and immunizations. But I think that to be respectful of folks' time and I think others are, you know, there's a council meeting after this. We may want to push off her presentation until August and maybe get an update on some of her activities. I want to just briefly touch on another topic real quick if you don't mind.
Okay, please do.
Okay. So I just wanted to let the, the board know that we have been essentially not only responding to the COVID, but we've been maintaining and working, as Kyle just, just pointed out, other activities. So he set up the Air Monitoring Network. We've been, other staff have been doing their normal day-to-day business. We actually have what's called a continuity of operations plan, commonly referred to as a COOP. That COOP allows us to essentially stop all other activities and respond to an emergency and it identifies what activities that we would continue in the event of an emergency. And the three activities that are identified are Communical Disease Act Work, Active Surveillance for Case Management of Active TB Cases, and then Public Information. I'm saying all of this to basically say that we're at the point that we were going to need to stop some activities and services. I'll be working with Kyle to pull together some teams to provide the break for staff so that staff can get breaks. And we're going to be pulling in other members to do other activities so that we can have a system of, you can give staff some time off and not have to work seven days a week. So there's going to be potentially times where we are later in responding to, you know, and, and doing septic permits, water availabilities, maybe have less staff available for some of our senior services activities. And it's all part of our COOP. And that COOP was developed for specifically this. And it allows us the ability to pull in staff, stop those other services. And I just want to let the board know that we plan to activate a portion of that COOP while maintaining what we say are the key elements for us to continue on with. So more just for your information that we have that in existence. And we will be activating that and bringing in staff to assist us in the response as appropriate.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Any questions? All right. And so please do put Connie on the agenda for our August meeting. And apologies to Connie. I know who spent time in preparation, but a lot of issues to deal with today. I hear a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
We are adjourned. My apologies to the council and we'll hope we'll move on to the council meeting. Rick, what time do you intend to start that meeting?
It is 1:57 now. Let's start at 2:10. Is that all right with council?
Yep.
Okay, good. Thanks, Rick.
Yeah, thank you, Doc. Appreciate it. And Ingrid and Jamie and Bill, I would just assume we would stay on this call, correct?
It's my assumption.
Okay.
All right. So back at 2:10.